Okay, good morning. Call the meeting to order. It's good to see everyone this morning. Hope everyone had a nice weekend and we had a spring break here since we've met last. So, everybody looks well rested and refreshed, so that's good. So, as we get started this morning, we need to approve the agenda. Any changes or amendments to the agenda?
Chairman Roberts, I'd like to add item E to the consent agenda. Approval of the South Stokes High School Auto Tech AC project. I shared that bid with you in an email. It's for thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars and I'd like to add that to the consent agenda this morning.
Okay. So, I have an addition to the consent agenda. The auto tech bid at HVAC bid at South Stokes. Any other changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as revised.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to our discussion agenda. A discussion of...
Consent first.
I'm sorry. Consent, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Now, that brings us to our discussion agenda. A discussion of twenty-two, twenty-three school funding. I think we have that listed from Ms. Moore and Dr. Rice.
Well, Chairman Roberts, realistically, we have presented the superintendent's agenda at the last meeting and so at this meeting, we're just doing the edits that the board would like for us to make, whether that's adding items or removing items. I presented ours, but I understand that that is the superintendent's recommended budget and the one that we send to the county commissioners will be the board recommended budget. So, at this point, I will accept, Ms. Moore, Goins and I will accept any edits that the board would like to make. Or if there's any questions about any of the items that after looking at it and having time to go back through it, you would have any other questions, we'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Board, any questions or edits? Ms. Knight?
My question would be number seven under salaries.
What?
The increase in instructional support salaries.
Okay.
Would that strictly be say TAs or other type of positions, Ms. Moore? Page one.
Ms. Moore, if you turn your microphone on, please. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay.
Instructional support is really directors and if, as we've mentioned before, we get a state allotment and that pays for a portion of that and then the offset has to come back to local and with our ADM decreasing, again, we do not have state planning allotments at this time. They're saying it still be a few weeks, but we're projecting that that line item will be decreased and we've just offset the difference locally. So, that's why you're seeing that slight increase.
And Ms. Moore, doesn't that also have to do with the state projected raise? The five percent that they gave all employees, two and a half percent last year, two and a half percent this year, that accounts for that increase as well?
But when you get your allotment, they allow for any legislative increases. So, whenever we get our state allotment, they will include a caution for any legislative increases.
And is that the same sort of thing, the one below it for principals slash assistant principals?
Yes, ma'am. We get so many months and when we exceed those months, then that has to come back to local.
So, what is the excess twenty-three, one thirteen on our high school principals?
Okay, if you remember sometime back, years ago, the board gave extra money for some of our high school principals and that state will not recognize anything over their rating on their certificate and that's what that is.
Mr. Brunt?
Yeah, I was looking here. I know Mr. Goins is wanting a twelve-month maintenance position. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have a HVAC mechanic, a bolt mechanic, who's going to retire tomorrow and I know this gentleman, he will retire.
Okay.
Bring someone in with him.
Well, let me ask you this then. If we hired, would you need someone to replace him plus another position or you just wanting to have a position to somebody be training until he retires?
I'd like for somebody to be training until he retires. It'd be great to keep it full-time, add another position, but the training would be valuable because...
Yeah.
...
So, as the way it stands now, we just need six months and then we're back to...
Yes.
One other thing I'm looking at. I'd like the principal mentor position. A little bit more information on that.
Currently, we have a mentorship program where when we get a new principal mentor, we assign them to a veteran principal. The, and they can use them to call and all of that to, when they have questions about things. And then, of course, the staff here is happy to assist in any of the other areas. Part of the reason that we do that is when you're struggling with something, sometimes you don't want to report to your boss areas that you're struggling about and so that gives them somebody else with whom they can talk and guide them. The more the issue we've had is we've had so many, so much turnover in the last few years with retirements, bringing on new people, is there's not as many veterans anymore. And so, we were looking at the possibility of hiring a retired principal in a part-time basis to do that for us. Again, if the board doesn't want us to, we'll continue doing the model that we have. It's just we're kind of running out of veteran principals. We've got a lot of good young ones, but with Mr. Otteway leaving and some of the others, we're down to about five or six with more than five years' experience. And so, we were just looking for that, but again, understand budget times and willing to do whatever the board would like us to do.
Board, any thoughts on the principal mentor position?
How many principals do you have more seasoned? I know like say Mr. Racy, but who else? Not at elementary though.
I'm sorry?
Not at the elementary level, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just saying at all levels. I mean, when you look around the county, Mr. Racy and Mr. Bowles are the two veteran principals in the north. On the southeast side, Dr. Goodman is there. Now, Dr. Thrower is a veteran principal, but not with us. And there is something about learning the culture of a new district as well. So, she will need some support right now, but she's the only veteran principal in the southeast. And then, in the west, Mr. Bennett has completed five years. Dr. Jones has been there for five years and all of the others are less than five as well. So, we have, we don't have that many anymore.
How many years is Mr. Bottoms?
Mr. Bottoms is completing, this is his fourth year, I believe. He's getting close to being that veteran, yes, but right now, I believe it's five out of eighteen. And Mr. Durham, six.
Is there any way we could take, and we may already be doing this, but take some of those more experienced principals and maybe give them a bonus and let them help out the less experienced principals? At least make it worth their time of partnering them up. Mr. Racy, Mr. Durham, I think Mr. Hall over at Meadowbrook is pretty seasoned principal would be a good, I think, mentor. Dr. Goodman. And just let them have a one-on-one, you know, with some of those principals and at least not have to go out and hire, you know, or contract. I guess it wouldn't really be a new hire. It would be more of a contract consulting that we might could save some money if we could, you know, just, just a thought there. Any thoughts on that?
I mean, again, that's what we're doing currently. I'm sure they would appreciate some extra compensation for that, for their time and, but absolutely.
Well, you know, personally, when I see the mentor, and I understand, I mean, it's principals going into a new position, maybe they need some support, need some help. And I get that, but I'm also, you know, and when I look through the budget, I'm also disappointed that, you know, we've talked a little bit about an aviation position. I've talked to Mr. Rose about it on multiple occasions and, you know, and we've talked about it for it seems like a couple of years now and I still don't see any move forward on that. And I know we have several aviation jobs in our area coming, more jobs coming and I think it's a great, it's a great, would be a great career for a lot of kids. Personally, I'd rather see the, you know, the money than so the principal mentor position put towards more in the aviation field, that we could do something that, you know, along those lines. If, you know, I've heard, you know, well, we don't have the money. Well, we've got the money for this, why don't we have the money for that? So, that would, I would prefer to see it back into the students that way than I had this. But any other thoughts on that from the board?
I sort of concur with you. Even asking Mr. Goins, I just wondered, you know, would we be better off to spend that money for a second maintenance position because I know we need it. You know, we are reactive instead of proactive on most things because we don't have the staff and everything and being reactive costs you a lot more money in the long run. You know, if we spent that money and just had one person being proactive, going out and doing services, stuff on a maintenance plan as far as greasing pump motors, stuff like that, bearings on all our HVAC stuff and all, because it's forty, fifty years old some of it. It needs replacing. Bad. We just gotta nurse it alone. We may be better off even doing something like that. And I'm with Mr. Robinson. I'd like to see that aviation also. So, I just think we have several needs that if we could do something a little different might help out in the long run.
Mr. Rogers?
Here's what I suggest. Add it, add the cost of another aviation-based CTE position to the budget. I mean, it's, we're talking about cutting one to add another, request them both and explain, I mean, what we did for Fire Academy, we just got their buy-in and they said, yeah, we'll fund it for the first two years. I think if we present it that way and they see the longevity of what it will present to the school system and the county as a whole, that's the buy-in portion. Because we're gonna have to fund that CTE position out of local dollars that we receive from them, so sell that position. But that's gonna require Mr. Rose and Dr. Rice and the staff to go ahead and have a clear-cut direction as to how we're gonna establish it.
Mr. Rose and I have done, he's done more research than I have, but we have both done some research on the aviation and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. We went through and looked at several different districts that have that program and the way that it's kind of set up in other districts, in the early stages of their high school career, they take some of the automotive classes, they take some drafting classes to get some of the engineering type things and some of the other math classes and things. And then, they partner with a community college to teach the other stuff in their junior and senior year where they will need hangars and equipment and that type of thing because that's where the cost really runs up. VersiTech just opened their aviation branch in January of this year. We have requested a meeting with them to talk about how we could possibly partner with them. They've not gotten back to us yet, but I know they're finishing up the semester and getting with graduations and stuff right now, but I didn't realize it had opened in January. I thought it was still in the planning stages and last Monday, I found out it had opened. And so, then we requested last week a meeting and we've not heard back from them yet because if we try to do it all in-house, there's a lot of equipment to buy and where the fire stations have been great to provide us with some things for that, to keep the expenses down, I'm not sure how much an airplane would cost and what all we would need for all of that. So, we're trying to work to see what our partnership with them would be. At the same time, there wasn't a huge urgency because the board never voted to do this. So, we didn't have the funding to do this. So, we were looking on ways to do it within our current budget and all of that, but if the board says we want to add a position, we want to do this, then we're happy to do that. I mean, we can pencil in the position now, but...
All right. And also, I wanted to share with the board that I did go ahead and create the survey to share out to students and presented all of our pathways within CTE. Aviation is a local course option, which is where we create the curriculum. We went in and looked at some of the other aviation spots that they had and basically what they were doing, we're offering courses that we already offer and then partnering with the community college. There is one on the coast that is a different model, but that's the only one that I could find. So, I looked at our student interest here and, you know, compared that too to think about when you're building a pathway. And I did like the model that I saw through Guilford County where they do the courses that they have and then partner with their community college. That's the way that we can offer this pathway. They already have the business links there and then hopefully, we can get that CCP option. They have already opened and they have it running, but they have not developed their CCP pathway yet. When they first opened, I did attend that grand opening there and then even prior to their opening, I already had the conversation with the folks in that department about that CCP option. Because one thing that concerns me tremendously with some of our multiple offerings, I think we all see that some of our programs, not just our population, but some of the numbers in our programs have dwindled some. And where we are competing for students all the time, I want our students to have their interest, you know, just like what we're talking about with some that are gonna be very passionate about aviation. But I'd like for them to be able to have that option, but, you know, possibly through the community college. Because all of our programs are competing for students. Every CTE offering, band, chorus, and as we go through ROTC, all of these are competing for students and I don't want our programs to start cannibalizing each other. So, I want us to offer as many programs as possible, but I think this is one that we can come up with a very strong CCP option possibly and I can, you know, share the results as I'm correlating all this for what students have shown the most interest in and letting you know some of those numbers. Because when we start looking at a pathway and you think about hiring a teacher who's gonna teach six sections a year, you need a pretty good following of students to make that a reality.
Well, I don't want to be negative, Nellie, Debbie Downer, whatever you want to call it, but we also need to look at the CT we have, if they're having to compete for a dwindling amount. We need to honestly look at what they're filling up in the classroom because maybe we're just offering a load of goods that nobody's buying because that's not interesting. Just because we taught something twenty-five years ago doesn't mean that's what we need to be teaching now. Because we went to a CTE class that had nine kids in it. Why are we teaching a class with nine if we've got six over here and fourteen over there? We need to figure out what is the need for the progression forward and it's gonna be different than it was when you could buy a two thousand two Impala.
Well, part of the, the problem comes with certifications because the teacher that we saw had nine, when we came back after that visit, we looked up, he had other classes of twenty-one, twenty-two and all that. He did have, out of his six a year, two low sections, but the others, other four sections were pretty full. Now, you could combine those two into one and make one class, but then what does his certification allow him to teach that last period that is not full? And so, right now in the schedule, yeah, it's like nine one semester and eleven another semester. Yeah, you could put those two of his lowest classes together to make twenty, but he's only certified to teach that stuff and if nobody signed up, then he either gets an extra planning period or I'm sure he wouldn't want to take a twenty-five percent pay cut to teach three-fourths of a day or, that's where it gets problematic is trying to make it match with certification. In CTE, many of those people are lateral entry where they're coming from that business world where it's harder to get those certifications. Now, Mr. Falp at North Stokes through the years has added certifications. He's the Swiss Army knife of CTE teaching. He can plug into anything else, but he's a rarity in that. If you're coming from the nursing field, you can't pick up a section of auto mechanics and vice versa. An auto mechanics teacher can't pick up a section of nursing. So, that's what plays into it. So, that's where you have to talk about, well, if you have one low section, do you kill a program and you lose eighty kids a year because you have a couple of low sections? Ideally, yes, you would have, you know, twenty per class, six periods, you'd teach a hundred and twenty kids and he probably teaches a little bit over a hundred, maybe in the high nineties total for the year. So, it's slower than we would like, but do you take away that from the ninety-five, a hundred kids that are already in it? And that's why he did the interest survey to see what are our kids interested in?
Well, we keep saying what they teach. We also need to look at where they teach because like fire tech, we teach it at North, we teach it at South, we share a resource. Nursing fundamentals at West, you have to qualify to get into that program. Maybe that's the way some of these CTE become. You either, I mean, we take the kid or the student that's more likely to pursue that career path because we're teaching a pathway. So, are we teaching a pathway for somebody to take and elect it or are we teaching a pathway for somebody to pursue a pathway? I have a strong doubt that of the hundred of the CTE we're talking about, we're gonna have that many people in that career path. So, maybe we teach an exploration semester where they try different things and figure out what pathway they want to go instead of I've got to top this one class all year long while I'm already in it's an easy A, let me keep going. Honesty needs to be where we're at.
Yeah.
I think we saw some of that over at West Stokes when we did our facilities tour. You know, we visited the carpentry class and the greenhouse and it was buzzing with activity, right? How many of those kids are actually gonna, you know, go into the carpentry field, you know, and be carpenters, be framers, house framers or trim carpenters or whatever? Same with the greenhouse, you know, how many are actually gonna go into that field or do they view that sometimes as a class that's, you know, I can take this class, it's not up, you know, it's not real hard, it's kind of fun? And, you know, are we really serving our students by doing some of those things?
Well, you know, there's a lot of landscaping now.
It is.
They do it to private homes and they have their own businesses and...
I think the success of those two should be the benchmark.
Yeah.
Because I know some of those are going into construction. Some of those are going into horticulture-based, whether it be greenhouse, landscape, architecture.
And both those classes are very good classes.
Yeah. I think all of our classes are good, but I think we're trying to offer everything to everybody and we're just diluting the pool as to what the true meaning of what we're trying to do is. Are we trying to get the person that's gonna be the next ASE-certified auto mechanic or are we just trying to teach somebody to change the oil in the backyard, maybe do the brake job or not?
Yeah.
I think the answer to that is yes. That both of that plugs into it. I mean, I think of our ROTC program. Does everybody that go through our ROTC program end up in the military or career military? And I would say that it's probably a pretty low thing. At the same time, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, we're only allowed to have an ROTC program if it's a certain percentage of the school population takes it. Well, and I know I'm speaking selfishly right now, if we limit it to only the people that's gonna be career military, we're gonna lose our ROTC program and my son's gonna be out of luck right now because he does want to be career military. And I didn't start the ROTC program for him, he was here before I got here, so that's probably a bad example, but, you know, if you only, I took foods in high school. I'm not a chef. I still cook. I took foods one and two and to be honest, probably my former superintendent in school district probably wouldn't want me to say this, I know the difference between a liquid and a dry measuring scoop probably more than I know what I learned in my English class. As a senior year, I learned some practical life skills that helped me to do some things and something I'm not in a career with, but it was interest level and it was fun. I did get a good grade, but I also learned some things in there that's gonna help me for life. And if you've been to a mechanic shop lately, I mean, a lot of them are charging eighty-five, ninety dollars to change the oil now. Well, if you learn how to change your oil in your car and you save ninety bucks every time you do it for the rest of your life, that's been, that was a worthwhile investment to take that class, to learn that stuff for the money you'll save in your life. Or, again, I talked to some people this morning about putting roof on a house and I got an estimate the other day for twelve, fifteen thousand dollars for my house. Well, if I'd have taken carpentry in school and some of that and I knew how to shingle a house myself, I could go down to Lowe's and buy my shingles and do it and save myself a lot of money if I've got the guts to crawl up there and enough ropes to tie me to it. So, there's both sides of it. There are those people who know what they want to do from the time that they're we-hi and to go into a career pathways for their careers is a wonderful thing when that works out. I don't know how many eighteen-year-olds ready to graduate or I could look around this room and probably ask, how many of us are doing what we thought when we were eighteen? Probably not a lot of us are. And so, the fact that you get a broad breadth of things to do, learn what your passions may be and learn skills that will help you in life, and if my son changes his mind and never goes into the military, I don't see that happening, but if that happens, I'm gonna say he's benefited from that ROTC program. His maturity level went up from the day he walked in as a freshman to that year at Christmas probably went up tenfold. He's learned responsibility. He's learned to serve others. He's learned respect from authority and other, he's learned a love of country. He's learned to be involved in the voting process and understands some of those things now. It's been a worthwhile journey for him, even if he changes his mind at the last minute. So, I think the answer is both. For those driven people, let's provide those opportunities. For other people, that random sampling's important. I'd rather them get it here than to pay for four years of college and then realize they didn't like something. Or to quit, not go to college, go to a trade school and then six months later say, man, I hate this. Roofing in the sun in the summer ain't for me. Well, if you wait, then trying to reset and go back, it's pretty late. So, I kind of like both options available, but also get, we're fighting for students and we have to have people that can teach six periods a year and we need to fill up classes. So, there's both sides of it and I get that, but I don't want to just limit us to saying this is only for full career path people because I think that really could limit us.
And we also, I mean, I've heard you all's discussion on the exploration and I agree with that, that we do need to offer more in the way of exploration. I would love for our middle school students to enter high school with an idea of a career pathway. Ms. Cheek and I met with counselors and we have gone through and called in Major Clarity. Major Clarity is one that highlights over sixteen hundred careers and our students get, will get to explore those. They'll see the on-ramps and off-ramps of all those careers. They will hear information about the co- They'll see the on-ramps and off-ramps of all those careers, they will hear information about the colleges that offer those programs. They'll see the salaries at all these different levels, so that we can have a better idea when they come in.
Starting at what grade level?
Sixth grade.
Okay, great.
Um, and when we're looking at this, you know, when you all talk about classes with nine students, our intro classes, they're exploring it and finding out about it then. I would love to see that pathway continue all the way up, to where that, that intro class, when we got to level one and level two, maintain the same numbers, and that's what's not happening. So, in an ideal CTE program, our students would know what they want to do, and then they would all end up being concentrators, or what we call, um, major pathway completers. Um, and that, that would be a goal for us. Also, I want to make sure that we're offering the best possible options for our students. And, you know, we, I love the idea of them doing autotech, and when they figure out, this is what I want to do. I'd like for them to do more. I mean, we've got some high-dollar equipment. But then, when you look at the programs that are offered with Forsyte Tech at their transportation center, I'd love to see our students getting in on those CCP pathways. And as soon as Forsyte Tech comes up with their CCP aviation pathway, like what is offered at Guilford, and I feel like that is a strong goal of theirs, considering that they met with me before they, they had opened that, so we could discuss it. That's a great option for our kids, and that is top-end equipment, a brand-new program, and it's already connected with the employers. So, you know, I think we can create within and get them access to the information, the skills that they're gonna need as they move into that program. Um, so I think there's some different options that we do need to look at, but I do think we have to be mindful of the interest within these pathways for our students. Because, you know, as it stands, since I've been here, we have had to cut out nearly five full positions. And that was while adding in the academy that we desired, and also adding that construction program at West Oaks High School. Which those are two huge successes, I think, for our county. Um, I just want to be mindful and as fiscally responsible as we possibly can. I think major clarity is an inexpensive program, but our kids will have a career pathway as they are coming into high school. So, you know, again, um, I am doing the surveys, we have those complete. I'm analyzing that data to look at what is of most interest to our students, and also trying to be as responsible as possible with those months of employment um, for our board chair.
Um, I wanted to ask a question. Is South Stokes the only one that offers the auto mechanics?
Auto mechanics is offered at North and also at South.
But if a student at West wanted to take it, they have to make arrangements to drive over, is that right? I ne- I know of several students that wanted to take that and actually did them, um, some of that at their home, but they were never able to take that in, at West. I was just, you know...
Right.
They were at West, they just couldn't, um, get over to South, so they never got to take it.
The interest had dwindled from the students at West Stokes going over. And then, after the fall of twenty fifteen, a position was lost there. Um, we actually had two auto mechanic teachers at South Stokes at that time. One of them went to work for Forsyte Tech, and that position was eliminated with the low interest for that spring. They just never brought that position back on, and students from West were not brought over. Um, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I think we could entertain students with a high level of interest riding the bus with ROTC to potentially participate in that.
So, that would be possible, but I guess the guidance council would have to arrange that.
I think on a very limited basis, just because of the numbers and what's allowed within that classroom with the one instructor.
Well, it just never worked out for those couple of students and...
But as far as the budget goes, I'm hearing strike the principal mentor position, is that kind of consensus? Now, we'll go ahead and knock that out, and look at other options for that.
Do we strike it, or just put a dollar figure in to potentially adjust for bonuses for the current senior?
Yeah, I think if we're, if we're asking principals to mentor some of those, uh, younger principals, then, yeah, I would be okay with compensating them for that. Uh, I just don't know if, uh, the whole, you know, whole position for that would be... So, I would, I would be, I would...
Fifty-three thousand for a part-time position, so I'm fine with twenty-five thousand for...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Supplement.
Five thousand supplement potential for the five that we've got in the senior.
So, strike fifty-three and make it twenty-five.
I mean, I'm...
Um, Ms. Jess has a question, Mr. Robertson.
Yes.
Thank you. Board, uh, one thing to think about there that I've seen in my experiences through the years is, as we've gone further into educating our students, there are so many more requirements. There is a decline in the number of people that we can even reach out to at the state level, at the Department of Public Instruction. What I've seen, even though the principals that are veteran, that we assign to mentor these new principals with less than five years, is that they have so much on their plate at their school. And so, if you've got a prince, a new principal who maybe needs some added coaching support beyond this level and from that, um, school-level principal, it helps tremendously, just like this year, where Mrs. Richardson was brought in to be at Pine Grove, and then stayed on a little bit to help, um, there. As they, you had a new assistant principal, certainly. Then now she is over at Southeastern with Dr. Lassane. So, being on-site every day, even if it's not that full fifty thousand, but maybe just think about that supplement amount, maybe going to a retired principal who understands the culture and can be there on an as-needed basis, maybe for X number of hours a month. So, just something to also think about as you make your decision. Thank you.
It might reduce it to just phone calls, you see, but I mean, instead of actually being on-site and seeing what the problems are. Uh, it'd be interesting to know how many times this person actually, you know, con- was contacted. Uh, you would have to know the conversations, but it might be interesting to know how many times the, uh, mentor was contacted and, and how much advice was given. Um, and who, you know, who are the principals, new principals that did contact them? I think it's hard for the new principals, if they're chosen and, you know, they're floundering, or they just need extra advice. It's, I think it's hard sometimes to reach out to people because they're afraid of confidentiality. You know, they don't want everyone to know that they're having problems, but yet they need the help. So, you know, that's the other side of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I don't know, you know, I guess they'd feel comfortable reaching out to an, an older, or more experienced principal, but, you know...
How do we come up with the, uh, the, the fifty thousand for the mentor position?
That was basically based on kind of what we're doing now with a retired person, and if you will see, it's not subject to retirement or hospitalization. So, they can only work so many hours a week anyway as a retired person. So, we've basically used that same concept in figuring the figures here.
So, is that twenty hours a week?
Has to be, no more than thirty. We try to keep them like twenty-eight or twenty-nine hours because it can...
Thirty now, okay.
Has to be under thirty.
So, see, it has to be under thirty, this, and are they on-site?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that was the, the plan of this, is yes, to be on-site, to spend time with them, and, you know, again, with mentoring different people, being in different sites, um, on a part-time basis.
So, if you had one, they'd be here at one school, and then they'd go to another and another?
Yes, ma'am.
But if you had, like Mr. Robertson mentioned, um, the other principals that are seasoned principals, would they be able to leave their school?
It would be more a phone call, consult, so, consultative, that type of thing, which, again, would be...
After school?
After schools, but, and, and again, our, our principals do reach out now, a- and again, we, that's the model we're, we're using now. Uh, we were just looking to enhance that, but that was just a request.
But then I'm fine with leaving it like it is? I mean, we're gonna have to come back with a red pen after the joint budget meeting.
Yeah, it might be good to leave it in the budget, but stick a kind of a pin in it and say, we, we may use that for it, or maybe we'll do like Mr. Robertson says, and give the bonus to...
Mentor.
To the mentor, other principals that are seasoned principals. But, you know, we don't have to lock it right into just this one person or one mentor.
Ms. Moore, if we, uh, added a, uh, position in, uh, and, and from listening to, uh, Mr. Rose, it may be that we're not ready to add a position for the aviation, but if we did, which, which item, which line item would that go under?
Well, you could show that as, as a new request, because you're actually creating a new program. So, we would probably show that, kind of like we did the Fire Academy, we actually reflected that under new request.
Mm-hmm.
So, to me, that would be the place we would need to add it.
Okay.
So, it would be like number nine under new requests, correct?
I'd just go ahead and put in number nine, as a standalone request. And like, um...
And, and just a question, Dr. Rice, would we show this like a ten-month, would it be the program start, you know, like the Fire Academy, we started half-year?
Right, I, I would say that we would look at this just a ten-month budget number, yes.
I think Mr. Rogers is right, just stick it in there as number nine, and then ask the county commissioners if they'd be willing to help start this, just like they did the Fire Academy.
Well, I know with, uh, the facility that Forsyte Tech has now at Smith Reynolds Airport, right, Ms. Rose? Uh, I think it's, you know, for us not to take advantage of that, so, you know, our close proximity to them, uh, the amount of jobs that are in the triad in this area, good jobs, uh, I think it'd be a good career path for a lot of kids. And I think the interest in it, maybe, uh, um, you know, maybe the ninth and tenth graders at high school probably maybe haven't thought about that.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's not something that you think a lot about, you know, you think about being an auto mechanic, or electrician, or plumber, mechanical. Um, but it's a, I think it's a, it's a little bit on the side that we don't think about a whole lot. So, I think maybe some, uh, as we, as we can go into the schools and talk to the kids and expose them to it, I think that our interest maybe would grow. But, um, there's gotta be a need for it, or Forsyte Tech, I don't think would have built the facility if they did, and spent the millions of dollars that they spent trying to get that facility at Smith Reynolds.
A- and I a hundred percent agree with you. I mean, I'm, Ms. Cheek can probably tell, I'm not aware of any kid coming to ask about Fire Academy before we had it.
Right.
But now we have kids in it. So, if we start one, I'm sure that we will have symmetris- get in it. And then, again, a- as always, it depends on the instructor, and if kids are having fun and learning about it, and they see kids being successful, and the jobs that they get from that, and, you know, then the interest has a chance to build, uh, absolutely.
So, I guess my question also would be, it, we add this here, and then I know what you were saying about Forsyte Tech, but when we get into capital, are we going to need to show an additional request for any kind of equipment?
Well, right now, the main things that, when we've looked at this, are CTE programs that we currently have, or what we would be responsible for. We would probably need to move some things around in places, but that probably could be handled through the CTE budget.
I don't know.
Through your equipment budget.
The cost of it?
I mean, you know, when you think about this, the auto tech component, the mechanical component?
It, it's the biggie.
The, the big one, like we've talked about, it starts off with auto mechanics and drafting. We don't have drafting at South, we do at North and West. We have auto mechanics at North and South, but not at West. So, whether you're talking busing students, or, but if you're talking about building an auto mechanics program at West Stokes, that's gonna be pricey.
And you'd be looking at a capital project, we can always purchase equipment within our CTE budget, but of course, no buildings with that.
And what did you say was not, was needed but not offered at South?
Drafting. And drafting's not that expensive.
Well, it sounds like just, you know, that might be the missing component in some of those CCP requirements, right? I mean, if you want even the West Oaks students to be able to bus to there to access that, it sounds like North has those two options.
North has both of those. Again, South needs drafting, West would need auto mechanics. So, the West students could come to South for auto mechanics and then take drafting back at their home school. Uh, South would need to add their drafting components, um, a- again, it, it, and how you want to offer it at all three places. Uh, again, that's where, once we find out that, yes, the board is voting on this, then we can find out how we're gonna make it happen.
The other thing is, like I said, with aviation, that's a local course option. I have to apply with a curriculum, there is a process to that. Uh, I would not be able to start an actual aviation class, we could do these prerequisites to it, but would not be able to start an aviation class in the fall. That has to be applied for within a local application, and it is a time process.
Well, I know, uh, where the facility at Forsyte Tech is built at, uh, Smith Reynolds, I can't, uh, I can't, um, imagine that we're gonna try to duplicate that at West Oaks or any of our high schools, right? My, and when I'm thinking about the aviation part, I'm thinking, um, why can't we give our kids an introduction to it? You know, get them the interest there, and get them introduction, maybe get some of their basic classes, so that when they graduate from high school, then they can go on to Forsyte Tech and be ready to take some of their classes there. I can't, you know, I can't imagine us having a, you know, getting a plane, an airplane, and, and at school, and, you know, we're not gonna have the equipment, and I wouldn't expect that.
But, and I don't have that list in front of me. Basically, that's the way that it works, is that the high school portion is getting them prepared for one of three different pathways in aviation. There was the pilot component, where they, you know, again, when they have that at the community college, they can actually get their pilot's license.
Yeah.
Then there's the engineering component, to work on the planes, to, to do that part of it. And then there's almost like a public safety component, uh, as well. And so, you go through your interest-level stuff at your high schools to com- figure out then which specialty area there you would do at Forsyte Tech.
Okay. Mr. Brunt, do you have?
Yeah. One thing that really concerned me, I just heard, we don't have drafting at South. I would really suggest we had drafting at South also for the simple fact that, whether it's used for aviation or whatever, if they go into any building trades whatsoever, that's gonna help them learn how to read blueprints to begin with. Cause they're gonna be drawing, designing the buildings, stuff like that, they're learning all that. So, no matter what trade they want to go into, if they want to be an architect, plumber, anything, they need to learn how to draw, like, read the prints.
I, I could not agree more. It's a great field. We did have that at South, the last semester that we offered that, the class had two students.
I got you.
So, I mean, we really had no choice but to eliminate that program.
Was the masonry and carpentry there as popular as it is now, or was that in place? I'm just trying to understand the scenario.
I mean, the carpentry has definitely gained ground. Masonry, not so much. Right now, carpentry is one of the higher-interest fields with, with South, they've had good numbers.
Anybody.
It was there then, too.
The odd thing about CTE is, it cycles. Back three years ago, two or three years, we had a huge waiting list for nursing fundamentals classes. And we couldn't get enough kids, w- I mean, we didn't have spots, we were looking for everywhere else to try to get them served, because we had so many of them. This year, whether it was because of COVID or whatever, we had problems filling up classes. Now, does that mean that nursing fundamentals is dying? I have a hard time believing that, because there's, it's a good-paying field and all of that, so maybe it's just the COVID-related nature of it. Maybe it's people afraid of hospitals requiring them to get vaccines, I, I don't know. But, you know, just a short time ago, there was a lot of people, then there was basically none. Carpentry classes fluctuate, sometimes they're full, sometimes they're half-empty, and then a couple of years later, they're back full again. It just kinda cycles in CTE, and when you have our size schools, again, it doesn't take a lot to change the, where the wave is.
You know, I wonder if, uh, we did a better job of presenting stuff to the kids where they had a better understanding of what the class would do for them before they, uh, chose what electives and stuff they were gonna have each year? If that would help some with some of that stuff, as you were just talking about, Dr. Rice.
Well, I think it comes down to, again, where we talk about cannibalizing other departments, is it's a competition. And, you know, if you have, you know, 500 students at South Stokes, you know, a certain number of them are on that college track. And then a certain number of them are gonna be in a trade track. And again, that number can fluctuate right and left, but let's just say it's 50/50. And it's probably not, but let's, Ms. Cheek, what, give me a better estimate. Thirty-five, thirty-five, four-year college? So let's say that 400 students a year, 380 students a year are looking at career trades. How many different pathways do we offer there?
Well, I mean, and it's not just those. You also have the other electives with ROTC, band, theater arts, and then you start going through your programs, construction, horticulture, animal science, Fire Academy. Then you have your computer tech, your foods programs, your health occupations.
Ten different choices?
Easily.
Just, I use 10 because I'm dumb and I can do the math easy. If you've got 380 kids and there's 10 competing courses, that gets down to the 38 kids apiece.
And those that I mentioned are pathways. So if we divide them out evenly, you're looking at 40 students per pathway, and then you're also looking at six classes for those 40 students that...
So that's where, you know, when people run for boards of education and people in the community say, we need more CTE options. And we're all for that. The reality, though, is, is that you have to come up with six sections of students, or people start saying, well, there's only nine in this class, or there's two in this class. Is it time to kill those programs? Well, there are still people in this community that, when they see me, are still talking about the cosmetology program at North Stokes that we need to have, uh, that they used to have years ago. And I don't disagree with that, but do we have enough for six sections a year? And if we do, again, when you only have so many kids, then what program is gonna be, go lacking? And so, and it's hard to create a program that, you know, you know the same kids are gonna be interested in for the next 20 years. Uh, video game design and gaming and all of that is popular. And you've got cybersecurity stuff at South, uh, and robotics at West, and those type things. And so while those are trending now, what's it gonna be in five years? Well, again, then you have people in the community say, but if we don't train carpenters and plumbers, we're in trouble as a county. Well, we wanna have, make sure we offer, but we try to offer as much as possible, but then we get into the numbers games. And, again, they have fairs at the schools, where they're set up with tables, and they come to them and they say, you know, what can I take here? What can I do? What kind of jobs are there? Then they go to the next table and they say, no, 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 you need to come here, because this is what we can offer you. Well, they can only choose so many. Uh, when it gets down to it, you get about 10 electives, right? Twenty-two required courses out of 32 credits?
And then, you know, when we look at it, and we talk about our partnership with Forsyth Tech, right there with the Meadows, I mean, again, those are options. Students have to invest a little bit in that, you know, with the process of getting there, and, you know, being separate from their school. But if you're truly interested in the welding or the electric trades, there's a great option there with cutting-edge technology. You know, with the latest and greatest equipment to use.
You know, if we could figure out ways that we could get more in, or in shifts, with, say, like auto mechanics with our garages. Uh, people want to be electricians or plumbers with some of the local plumbers or something, you know, where they could work in the summers, or after school a little bit or something. That might could help, too, where we wouldn't have to offer so much. But yet, we can help the kids that really wanted that program.
Well, and efficiency would help in this. Again, if you look at Mooresville graded school district and what they can offer their kids with one high school, the Davie County High School that has one high school, and you're not having three ag programs, and two automotive programs, and three CNA programs, and all of... And if you're efficient in less schools, you can offer more, and you don't have to worry about the three kids that may take this versus this. But when you're spread out, it's hard to offer everything to every school in small communities without having a lot of winning and losing going on. Um, but efficiency would greatly help this conversation. Again, we want to offer everything that possible. But, again, you have to look at then the net result of, if I have a teacher there, they need to teach six sections a year, and ideally, they'd have 20 per class. So I need 120 students interested in my subject every year. And if you've got 380, that's three, and we're offering 10.
Yeah, Mr. Rogers?
My simple suggestion is this. Let's put a line item in there to hire a position, to be the aviation coordinator, so that they can go to the middle school and drum up the sport, then go to the high school and say, here's what you need to take to get you ready for Forsyth Tech, because in auto tech, they're gonna learn about engines, an engine in an airplane, an engine in an automobile, still work with pistons until you get to jets, and we're not gonna teach thermodynamics anyway in high school. So let's just, and that at least becomes the ground to build upon. And that way, we're out of here before we get to March.
Yeah, it's a start anyway, right?
Right.
And I wanted to say something to Mrs. Moore. Um, on this 2022, 2023 superintendent's proposed current budget expense, um, it looks like that we, I could be reading this wrong, but it seems like that we're not asking as much this year as we did last year. We're...
Are you looking at just new requests, or are you looking at the total budget?
The blue pages.
Yeah, the blue.
Right.
The new requests.
See, down at the end, it says subtotal current expense. Um, was that just technology?
Yes, that is.
So up there at the top, are we, um, asking less this year?
And let's see.
It says negative 210,000.
Says negative 210,000. Yeah.
New requests last year were 698. New requests this year will be 488.
Right, and this year, we're even requesting less, so...
New requests.
When we ended up with your revisions, we actually had 644,217 dollars last year in new requests.
Right.
And a lot of those new requests, though, have shifted now to your regular...
Current expense.
Current expense. So that's tied in. Yes, ma'am?
Sure, it is, but...
Well, and again, part of that is trying to be responsible. We realized that some of those continuing expenses, whether that's insurance, gas, all of that stuff went up. And we realized that just to maintain, we're still asking for a major increase.
Right, you are.
Right, right. I realize that, but...
And just giving an example, last year, we had two technology engineering positions. They are now in your regular current expense. We had a maintenance position, that's in the regular now. We increased the supplement, that's in your regular. So those things that were in your new request are actually not in the blue anymore, because they actually fell into the regular current expense request.
And it's causing our current expense to be more...
Yes, and then this is over and beyond what we had last year.
Yes.
Okay.
But it is, thank you.
And what dollar figure do we wanna put on the coordinator?
Uh, Ms. Moore, come up with something for that.
Okay, okay.
We'll let, we'll leave that up to her. Um, okay, board, um, any other questions about anything there, um, in that part of the budget?
So would number nine be the fourth name?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if you all, you might be asked the question when you go to the commissioners, are these in priority order, the new requests?
They always ask that, don't they?
They usually do ask that. So I don't know if that's something that you wanna look at now or not. Dr. Rice, we've just put these in as new requests, not necessarily priority. You agree?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, um, maybe let Dr. Rice look at that, maybe get back with us on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, another thing I wanna, want us to discuss for just a minute, uh, on our capital budget request, um, we have a list, uh, the superintendent's recommended casual, capital budget request, um, that we've talked about submitting of two, uh, 2.7 million of urgent needs that we have for capital. Uh, but I think we, I think one thing we figured out in our, and we probably already knew this, but in our, our facilities tour, uh, we saw, you know, we saw many items that was on, that needed repairs, updates, um, that are not in this 2.7 million. And we have a, uh, we have another list here, um, other capital budget requests that are not recommended at this time. Well, that list is about, um, almost 25 million. And I know in the past, we submitted this list, uh, to the commissioners and said, you know, here's, uh, coming soon. Uh, here's the projects, and every year, we try to chip a little bit away from that. But, um, it's kinda like we discussed on our facilities tour. We're more in the reactive mode. We're reacting to things that break and, and, and give out, have to be repaired, deteriorated, peel and paint, whatever it is, uh, instead of doing maintenance and trying to get ahead of the curve. So my suggestion is, I think we should, uh, this list that we have that are not recommended at this time, I think we need to submit it as a capital, uh, budget request that are, uh, recommended at this time, that we send...
Starting on page nine, all of that?
Send it to seven.
Yeah.
Um, well, page, yeah, the page eight is the beginning of it, uh, other capital budget requests that are not recommended at this time. And then there's about three pages there of things, and there's things on...
You're correct, nine, it starts the other budget request.
Yeah, it starts on page nine. There are items on that list that we saw during our facilities tour that we know need to be repaired. And there's things that we saw at these schools that need to be repaired that are not on this list. So how, how long do we, you know, do we kick this down the road to where we're not making these repairs? And it seems like we're not coming up with a plan, nothing's getting accomplished. You know, at what point do we say, okay, look, we're gonna have to do something? We've got, we've got schools that used to be high schools back, uh, my parents were 86, and they went to the school that's now King Elementary. They're 86 years old. You know, that school, we've got schools that's built in the 50s. Now, we saw, uh, you know, we saw all kinds of issues with these schools that, um, we've gotta come up with a plan. That's, I think, as a board, that's our position, and our job is we've gotta come up with a plan. Any, any business has a plan, a good business has a plan. So we need to come up with a plan, and if we just keep submitting to the, uh, to the county, you know, our budget requests are 2.7 million, and that's up, you know, 500, 600,000 from last year, then they look at it and they say, well, we've funded, every year, we funded what you've asked for. Well, we're asking for the bare minimum of what we feel like it maybe we can get. And we submit this other list, but is this other list really taken seriously or not? I don't know. But there's no action on it, there's no plan. So my idea is, let's go ahead and submit it all to them, if it's close to 30 million dollars. Okay, well, here's the needs that we actually need in our schools right now. And I know that's a high number, and I know we're probably not gonna get that. But I think we gotta draw some attention to it, more so than what's been in the past. We've gotta, we've gotta start putting this out there, and we gotta come up with a plan. And part of that plan is, is how much money are we gonna have to spend? And I've used the example several times. If I wanna go buy a house, I'm gonna have to go talk to the bank and ask the, the mortgage lender, how much money can I borrow? Well, if they tell me I can borrow 300,000, there's no need for me to look at a million-dollar house, right? So if we've got all these needs, and this is, this 30 million dollars is not the total list, I'm sure. We've got more, more items...
Again, we asked the principal for the top three requests.
The top three requests is this. So at some point, we're, you know, and we've talked about it already. Uh, we've talked about it in, in some of our facilities tour meetings. Uh, you know, what are we gonna do? We, just like Dr. Rice said, with his CTE classes, you know, uh, if we had less schools, we could be more efficient. We could offer more items. And, um, and I think at some point, we're gonna have to come up with that plan. If we don't, I don't feel like we're doing a job. What we're put on this board to do is to look out for the schools and look ahead, look forward, and not just be in a reactive position all the time. We've gotta be a little bit more proactive and take a stance and say, look, uh, we've gotta meet with the county, maybe separately, uh, outside of the budget, and say, what, you know, how much money is the school's gonna be allowed to have? What can we do? And then, once we figure out that amount, then maybe we can come back and we can come up with a better plan. But I would propose that we go ahead and submit the total, uh, the total, uh, coming soon budget here, as I call it, the not recommended at this time. Let's go ahead and add that into the capital, uh, request, send it up, and then maybe that will at least kickstart our discussion a little bit and figure out, what are we gonna do? How much money we're gonna have, and we're gonna have to, you know, we've got, uh, we can count off the schools that we've visited, uh, Sandy Ridge, Pine Hall, London, King Elementary, Pinnacle, uh, just off the top of my head, that are all schools that need quite a bit of work done to them. Um, whether that's replacing those schools with new schools, or going in and doing some major repairs, uh, that's what we gotta figure out. But, uh, but I'm gonna propose that we submit this with the budget as our capital, uh, request, and, uh, and hopefully that will at least start our discussion of what we can do going forward.
Do you need a motion?
Well, before we do that, let me ask, let me ask a question. Page 11 in here, the very last page, we had gone to athletic directors and talked to them about needs and wants. Those are pushed to the very back of that back list, and all of those are signified with athletics on the left-hand column. Um, there's, I guess my question was, do you wanna include that list as well? That's not necessarily school request list. Those were additional athletics. And when you look at some of this, you know, activity bus, yeah, are there activity buses that need to be taken off the road? Sure. Uh, you've got irrigation systems. You have a video scoreboard in here. Uh, now, I'll be honest with you, Coach Sammons is probably gonna have a video scoreboard at some point, because he's the type of person that, if he gets his mindset to it, he's gonna find enough donors and things to make something like that happen. But is that some, building a new fieldhouse, restroom, storage? Are those items that you want on this list as well, or do we wanna take this last page of athletics off? Because, again, that came from athletic directors talking about needs and wants, and we just pushed it to the back page. We listed it because they said it, but, you know, again, if we're talking about that, um, that might be a different thing. Mr. Goins?
And kinda just to add what Dr. Rice is saying...
Mr. Goins, if you get to...
The microphone, please.
Just to add what Dr. Rice is saying about what athletic request on that last page, they put the numbers to that, the dollar cost to that. And I'm concerned about some of the dollar cost I see there, that we can't do it for that price either.
Yes, like you're not gonna get a restroom and storage fieldhouse at Ponty Grove for $40,000.
No, no, we're close.
And you're not gonna do it.
And you're not gonna do the weight room at West Stokes for 600,000 either.
Yeah, I would suggest that we maybe eliminate that last page.
That page, I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, because we're, we're actually talking about the condition of our schools here, and that's a, maybe a more of a won't list than a need list.
So we'll stop with the 23,000, 23,771,875 on the bottom of page 10.
Yes.
And then, Mr. Robertson, I have one question. Administration prioritized the capital outlay that we recommended. So now that we're coming along and adding what was not recommended, will administration put that in priority order, or the board?
If you would like us to, we can sit down and knock that out. But if, if you want to approve that priority list, you know, we would need another meeting before the 15th.
Yeah.
Or we could just add them to number 23, I believe, and we could rank that below that as 23 and beyond.
Or you just start at 23 and say, urgent needs, not in priority order.
I agree.
Because we could be here for four days trying to...
Because we could be here for four days trying to figure out.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be hard to prioritize that list.
Yes.
To me, they're all, uh, they're all.
If you'd like to delegate that to us, we'll take care of it this week.
Yes, they're all, I think they're all top priority.
Just note that it's not in priority order.
Yeah, don't do it, yeah.
Well, what about that irrigation repair? It looks like that would be something.
I think that's on the page that we're going to take off.
I know, but it looks like that would be something that.
But most irrigation things are handled at the school with our booster clubs anyway right now, correct?
Is that right?
And it's only a thousand.
Well, there's two.
We'll get his maintenance requests, but we'll help him out with repairs.
Yeah.
Well, there's, we normally think of it, if a group puts it in, we work to maintain it.
Yeah.
Now, that irrigation repair, that's for the football field or for the grounds?
For the practice field.
There's one at South and one at.
Yeah, I would think, uh.
It's working off a well that's full of sand, so it keeps hogging it up, and it's to go in and put an automatic flusher on it.
Maybe we can take care of that through the maintenance department.
Yeah.
It may be something we can work on.
Both schools got estimate of four grand, will that touch it, Mr. Goins, do you think?
We can check into that, and again, we'll have a hundred thousand in emergencies that if we need to get four thousand dollars.
I just thought maybe that might be something.
I was actually wondering if that hundred thousand in emergencies is even enough.
So is everybody good with adding this into the, and sending this up as a capital request?
I'm good with it, but based on Mr. Bryant's statement, I'd say we add a hundred and fifty to maintenance because everything's overshooting.
Yeah.
So we need to add a fifty percent because I'm sure you're not, you, you're using more than your hundred thousand dollars a year in emergencies, or you're not.
And the increased expenses and everything.
Yeah, I mean, everything's going up.
I would agree with that, too.
Everything's going up, include the age of our buildings and everything else, so we need at least a bigger buffer.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay. Now, do we, uh, as a board, do we feel fairly comfortable with what we've discussed here? Do we need, uh, an extra meeting? Uh, I think the, May the fifteenth is the date we have to have this up the hill, is that correct?
That's correct, that's a Sunday, I believe.
Okay, on a Sunday, so, uh, do we, I'm good with it, do we feel the need to, are we good with what we got here? Uh, let Dr. Rice tweak this a little bit more.
Add the aviation, combine these others, but the bottom half in non-priority, take off the last page.
Yes, Ms. Knight.
I had a question for Mr. Rose. Did you need anything from the board in regards to the major clarity and the work being done in the middle school and that whole program, so students can be more acclimated with jobs and career choices earlier?
It's a minimal cost on that program.
Okay.
Uh, it looks like it will be under sixty-five hundred dollars to add that right now, so I think we're good there.
But we do plan to have that in place by?
Fall.
By the fall, okay, great, I think that's.
Is that a computer program?
It is, and it has built in, um.
That every student would get exposure to, with helping them make decisions and see what's out there? Okay.
Yes, I've shared that with our counselors and our principals thus far for the secondary levels.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, do I have a motion to move this, um, budget to action as revised?
I'll make a motion to move it to action as revised.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion on this? Do I feel good about it?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, that will be, uh, action item B.
Yes, sir.
Uh, budget as revised. Okay? All right. So now, let's get into, uh, just like.
A lot of contracts.
Ms. Collins is going to be, uh, with us here for a while, so, uh, the discussion item B, uh, discussion of Youth Haven Services LLC, and, uh, and there's actually, uh, well, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, there's about nine items here that we're going to, contracts that we were going to go through.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, Ms. Collins?
Yes, sir. Um, board, there are, um, as Mr. Robertson said, lots of contracts in front of you. It looks like a lot, um, we do have a lot, but they're not, uh, different than the ones we had last year. The first two are for our Youth Haven Services for elementary and middle and high school-based therapy and day treatment. We actually, um, receive revenue from them, we have a teacher in the elementary classroom that they help us pay for. We do not put out any money for that, that service. That's, and I'm ready to move on to the next one unless you have questions about those two.
Yes, ma'am, we're good.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No, I'm fine.
Uh, I think you just stated this, but, uh, these contracts are the same contracts we had last year?
Yeah, they were very minor changes, just to clean it up a little bit.
Okay.
Um, and Mr. Johnson has approved all of them.
That's what I was going to say, tell the board that, uh, Mr. Johnson has looked at these, uh, uh, contracts, these services, uh, approved all this, uh, so we're pretty much a matter of just formality here.
Yes, it, it won't take as long as it looks.
Okay, continue, please.
Okay, um, item D is our speech language pathology services with, uh, speech center. Um, that's actually five physicians. We have, um, luckily been able to reduce our number of contracted physicians there. We've been able to hire, uh, we've probably hired two or three, uh, new speech therapists or four since I've been here, which is almost unheard of, and it's mostly students coming back that lived in this area, so we're very happy to have those folks. E is our audiological services, that's only a fourteen hour a week, uh, service. F is occupational therapies, also just, that's a twelve hour a week service. Equalized sensory services, that's for our visually impaired students. Their hours are a little difficult to, uh, uh, calculate, so I'll just let you know, there 'd be eleven students that are served there for various times. Um, the last two, H and I, are two home healthcare nurses that, um, we have two students that require a one-on-one nurse, and they're at different agencies because we try to, um, have continuity of care for those, uh, parents that have perhaps Bayada, and another family uses Angels of Care when they're at home, so we try to have that continuity of services and use the same company.
Good.
You're welcome.
Ms. Collins, do you need these for approved today, or could they wait and be put on the consent agenda for next meeting?
Either way, they could wait if you want to wait, or today if you're ready to approve today, but they can wait if you'd like to.
You want to.
Put on consent for next time?
I think what we'll do is we'll just add these to consent agenda, uh, for our next meeting. Is that, board, any questions, uh, for Ms. Collins on any of these contracts?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, brings us to, uh, discussion item J, discussion of federal fund budget amendment. Uh, Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir, you have, uh, budget amendment number four for the federal grants. We're constantly receiving changes in our federal grants from DPI. As you can see, there's eleven different PRCs here, a lot of it's the ester funding, but it increases our federal overall by forty-eight thousand, seven thirty-two, seventy-nine. And it would be good if we could move this to action because as we receive additional changes from the state, then it would allow us to come back again for you on any other additional changes.
Okay, so that would be the, uh, federal fund budget amendment number four. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion to move this to action?
I make a motion to move federal fund amendment four to action.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
So that will be action item C, federal fund budget amendment number four. Uh, we have a discussion item K, discussion of addendum to MOA with Stokes County Health Department. Ms. Cheek?
Good morning, board. Um, this is an addendum to our existing, uh, MOA with the Stokes County Health Department. They have received funds, uh, to employ a school health liaison. Up until this point, a lot of her work has revolved around, um, COVID and contact tracing. Uh, however, those funds do allow her to do a variety of things within the schools. Um, she is an RN, uh, she's currently observing, um, our school nurses, um, and the Health Department has agreed that she can help with screenings, um, with puberty classes, those kind of things, and then also help provide health services in the schools for our summer programs. Um, so just needed to update, based on recommendations from the school nurse consultant at the state level, um, and, uh, this has been approved or been, uh, reviewed by Mr. Johnson. Um, so we're recommending that this addendum, uh, be put in place to incorporate that school health liaison position.
Okay. Board, any questions?
Um, would her main job just be like helping if health needs arrive, like during the summer especially, or?
They will look very much like the school health, uh, the school nurse responsibilities at this time, training for, um, caring for diabetic students, um, emergency response if there was an emergency, um, training the teachers, communicating with families if there are, um, nutrition needs, and then communicating that to our school nutrition department, um, very similar to the role that school nurse plays.
Any other questions? Do we, uh, would you like this moved to action today?
If we could move it to action, that would be great.
Okay.
Make a motion to move it to action.
Okay.
A second.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
So this will be the, uh, addendum to MOA with Stokes County Health Department.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Ms. Cheek. Uh, that will bring us to discussion item L, discussion of bid for North Stokes Track. Mr. Goins?
Yes, board members, we had the bid opening Friday, uh, for that, and only two contractors showed up. We needed at least three to open bids, so we rescheduled that bid, uh, for the second bid open on May the tenth. The roofing projects at Pine Grove, the next item?
Yes.
We also opened the, uh, had, had scheduled to open those bids on Friday, Thursday afternoon. There was, there was some questions on the, uh, the installation of the roofing material that could possibly void the warranty, so to get clarification on that out to all the bidders, uh, we rescheduled that bid for this coming Friday.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Goins?
Thank you, board member.
Thank you, Mr. Goins. Okay, so that's, uh, that's the end of our discussion items, that brings us to our action We will come back to the, uh, personnel, approval of personnel after our, uh, personnel report in closed session. So action item B, uh, budget as revised, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, budget as revised.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, do I have any further discussion on the budget? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh, action item C, federal fund budget, uh, amendment number four, as presented by Ms. Moore.
I'll make a motion to approve the federal fund amendment number four.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Action item D is a, a addendum to MOA with Stokes County Health Department.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, uh, that brings us to our information and announcements. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Board members, there are a few items in the information and announcements portion of your packet I like to draw your attention to. The first one being, our next board meeting will be held on May the sixteenth, that's a regular session, starting at six PM here in the boardroom. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I do want to thank all of our teachers and staff of Stokes County Schools for the work they do. We've seen evidence of that in our visits over the past few weeks, and certainly appreciate all the work that they do each day to impact our kids. Math Fair Awards will take place tomorrow evening here in the boardroom at six o'clock PM. Our Battle of the Books for Elementary winner, they'll be competing this Saturday, May the seventh, at ten AM at Cornerstone Charter. And then our retiree reception will be held on May nineteenth from six to eight PM, that's at YMCA Campaigns. And lastly, I do want to point out, this Saturday, we'll have our first graduation of Stokes County, um, early college high school, that'll happen at ten AM at Central Park in King. I also want to point out that their Forsyth Tech commencement is May the fifth, which will be this Thursday. Other than that, you have graduation dates, seven-month PMR and fundraising requests, as well as field trip information in your packet. I do want to point out that the field trip listed for the JROTC at South Stokes High School, that's listed in your packet, has been canceled, so.
And that was due to budget cuts with the Marine Corps. The Marine Corps pays for that trip, and there were budget cuts above the school level. One other edit I would like to say, uh, the next meeting is not May sixteenth, the next meeting is the town hall meeting Thursday night, May fifth, at six-thirty at Pine Hall School. So the re, next regularly scheduled meeting is May sixteenth, but the town hall meeting is this Thursday.
And that, uh, this Thursday, uh, at Pine Hall, that, that will, that's more than